Hundred fifty seven thousand, hundred fifty five dollars and ninety eight cents. Two monthly bond payments totaling forty eight thousand, five hundred fifty four dollars and ninety two cents. Grand total payable checks payable on bond payments, one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, five hundred seven dollars.
Okay.
And no cents.
Okay, you got a motion to approve the consent agenda? Walter makes a motion. James seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Moving on, visitor. Do we have a visitor?
Jean called and said he was stuck at the lake at Starbucks fixing their plumbing. And he asked me just to say he came to talk about Carter Street, that for twenty-three years he'd been told you'd get curbs on it or something.
Yeah, I talked to that RV guy, or the trailer park guy. He doesn't want a curb on that other side. So, that's a problem until we get that resolved. Okay. We do have some new business. Got an ordinance approving the, well, I gotta read them, so.
Oh, yeah.
First bill is twenty-four dash oh five four. An ordinance approving the proposal of Bales Construction Company to install a replacement metal roof over the community center bathroom area. Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Can I just say before I say yes, the first four ordinances here were all discussed, no, the first three ordinances were all discussed in a finance meeting and it was recommended that we bring those to council. That way it don't have to say it every time we go through.
Good.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading, twenty-four dash oh five four. An ordinance approving the proposal of Bales Construction Company Incorporated to install a replacement metal roof over the community center bathroom area. Got a motion on the second.
Motion.
Glenn, or Linda makes a motion?
Second.
Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Ordinance four zero six four. Ordinance approving the proposal of Bales Construction Company to install a replacement metal roof over the community center bathroom area. Motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, four point two is twenty-four oh five five. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of twenty twenty four Ferris zero turn mower and accessory equipment from Gar Truck and Equipment Company. Got a motion on the first reading. James makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Yep. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. I can get it to you on this. Twenty-four oh five five. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of twenty twenty four Ferris zero turn mower and accessory equipment from Gar Truck and Equipment Company.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion.
Second.
James seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance four zero six five. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of twenty twenty four Ferris zero turn mower and accessory equipment from Gar Truck and Equipment Company Incorporated. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance four zero six five. Ordinance approving a bid from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the purchase installation of fencing for the fire department training area. Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number twenty-four oh five six. An ordinance approving a bid from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the purchase and installation of fencing for the fire department training area.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion.
Second.
Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero six six. An ordinance approving a bid from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the purchase and installation of fencing from the fire department training area.
Okay, got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. So Linda makes a motion. Glenn seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, four point four.
Tyus? This is a two-part thing we're doing today, appointing me to, for us to get in front of the Associate Circuit Court. One is to, for us to be the prosecutor, and the other one is for us to determine that we should go to the Associate Circuit Court. So, bill number twenty-four oh five seven. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement, authorizing attorneys Tyse Smith and Kerry B. Williamson to act as municipal prosecutors for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading?
Bill number twenty-four oh five seven. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement, authorizing attorneys Tyse Smith and Kerry B. Williamson to act as municipal prosecutor for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion. Glenn seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
She dropped me my hearing aids.
Oh, yeah?
That's all you hear.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero six seven. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement, authorizing attorneys Tyse Smith and Kerry B. Williamson to act as municipal prosecutors for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance, please. James makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, four point five.
Your honor, this is the one where we choose to go before the Associate Circuit Court. The statute has six months before we can do that. However, we can petition the chief judge, Hickel, to do it at an earlier date. And we plan, I plan to do that, and we've done that before.
Okay.
And so it's bill number twenty-four oh five eight. Ordinance selecting the violations of municipal ordinances of St. Robert to be heard and determined by a Plasque County Associate Circuit Court.
Okay, got a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Hey, Tyus, real quick, can you just explain that a little bit more? Maybe I missed something there.
Okay, the statute allows municipal cases to be heard before Associate Circuit Court. I don't know why anybody would want to do otherwise, because we get a free judge, we get free bailiffs, we get free clerks, we still get all the fines. And they do, and the problem is, they also, they will enforce situations like, they don't show up, they'll collect the money, if they don't collect the money, they put them in jail. So basically, we have an Associate Circuit Court with the full power of the Circuit Court to, of course, our ordinances. The only cost that we end up having is our prosecutors. Our police officers don't even have to go to court unless it's a small trial.
Beautiful.
And I've been doing that with Richland for a year and a half, and I haven't had trial yet. And it works beautifully.
Okay.
Crocker and us are both doing it now. Newburg is doing it. People are starting to figure it out.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
I have a question about our personnel. Should I wait till close for that?
They're staying here.
Huh?
They're staying here.
No, I'm talking about our court clerk.
Two clerks.
Court clerk.
They're staying here.
They're gonna stay here, well, you just said they-
They're not gonna work in a court, but they're gonna stay here.
Oh, they're gonna have other jobs?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Bill number twenty-four oh five eight. An ordinance selecting that violations of municipal ordinances of St. Robert be heard and determined by a Plasque County Associate Circuit Court.
Okay, got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero six eight. An ordinance selecting that violations of municipal ordinances of St. Robert be heard and determined by a Plasque County Associate Circuit Court.
Got a motion on the reading. James makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Next one is a redevelopment, TAC TIP thing that you-
We have this ancient tip that has been non-functioning out on that land that Michael Bunbar sold for the bank. That tip is still out there, it's been authorized, it hasn't been doing anything for ten years, and it's just, we need to get rid of it. And so basically, Anita brought it to my attention, so it's an abandoned tip at this point, so we're rescinding the tip agreement. The people that we originally had the tip with don't even own the land, of course. There's three owners after that, so we just don't want a tip out there that could give us some problems later on, so we're gonna rescind it.
Okay, reading of the bill? Reading of the bill?
Bill number twenty-four oh five nine. An ordinance rescinding the Woodland Hills redevelopment project area tip tax increment financing plan.
Okay, got a motion on the first reading.
I'll make the motion.
James? Glenn seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Glenn, Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading?
Bill number twenty-four oh five nine. An ordinance rescinding the Woodland Hills redevelopment project area tax increment financing plan.
Got a motion on the second reading. Linda makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero six nine. An ordinance rescinding the Woodland Hills redevelopment project area tax increment financing.
Got a motion on the ordinance. James makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Harvey?
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, public works?
No.
No. Emergency services?
Okay, thanks, sir.
Park department?
We need anything, James? James?
Charles?
Charles.
I don't believe so.
Oh, James, we're through the park. No, we don't need anything.
Okay, comments by all of them, and we'll start down here with John. No comments. Okay, Mike?
Nothing.
James?
Nothing, Mr.
Walter?
Nothing, sir.
Linda?
Thank you to Parks for keeping the dog park up. It's been looking nice lately, and grass has been mowed, and thank you to Steve for getting the big tubes out of there.
Okay. Susan, anything?
No.
Glenn?
Real quick, I have a question, if I may, please. And this whole emergency evacuation thing where these campers come up to the community center, does anybody know where the communication gap is there? Who notifies who? So we're not up there, like, knocking on the doors saying, hey?
The city of Waynesville gets notified, the way I understand it. They notify the campers, but they also notify Charles or Mark or somebody that they're coming, right?
So they, the city of Waynesville PD, their dispatch called St. Robert PD, our dispatch, and I think that's where the communication failed. They, our dispatch didn't notify the park department. I don't think it-
That they were coming up that night?
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard about it the next morning, basically, mid-morning.
Okay.
'Cause I know there was-
Is it over?
Yeah, there were some people pretty upset about knocks on the doors. How else can we handle that? We had no communication.
What are you gonna do, knock on doors?
Just like going up saying, hey, you know, you gotta pay twenty bucks since you're here, no fine, just, I don't know.
That's your Facebook here.
Waynesville shouldn't be letting them know that. They've got a choice to come up there for twenty bucks a night.
Okay. So are these folks aware they gotta pay twenty bucks? Do you know, Charles?
The people that I talked to when I did go knock on doors of their camper, the city of Waynesville, their RV park, it just extends their state. That's what they're told by Waynesville. Waynesville is not telling those people that it's twenty dollars a night at our evacuation site.
Huh. They shouldn't be collecting if they're not down there, but, yeah, I'll give John a call.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did, why did they have to pay us when they have already paid their rent in Waynesville? Why isn't Waynesville responsible for paying us?
Well, that may be what we end up doing, is John pays us based on the-
I mean, it's not their fault, the river-
If they collect the money, it may be just-
And they've already paid, somebody was on Facebook saying, I've already paid Waynesville for my rent, and now I gotta go up there and pay St. Robert twenty dollars. So, seems to me like Waynesville should be paying that.
Yeah, we're working on that.
We're working on that.
It's gonna work out in the future.
But I think, I believe that the contract with Waynesville and their people in the RV park have the flood warning in the contract and some kind of provision. I believe. They asked me about that provision a year and a half, two years ago, and I think they inserted it. So if they have a warning with the people that says, it's subject to flood in this area, then they made some agreement in that contract, I believe, in the contract, so I think they've already dealt with that. I may be wrong, but I-
Yeah, but we're not getting the money, we're having to chase these people together.
So I think they made that in the old contract, because they asked me about it.
And we've got an agreement with Waynesville through-
Yeah, that is a really recent agreement.
And in there, it says twenty dollars a night, so. Okay. Okay, good question, Glenn. We'll get it worked out.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Administration, finance. Fred?
I don't have any more questions, I was just asking.
Okay, we're at four point six, man?
Yes, sir. We're still waiting for them. The sales tax won't, won't show up until the end of this week, first part of next week. Oh, okay.
Okay. Dana?
Nothing, thank you.
Hey, Curtis, ain't you here? Mike, anything?
No.
Steve?
Steve's the only one of you guys that's doing anything. What's going on here?
We have, we went up to the community center and we mowed and graded the lot, repaired some bleachers around the, to get it prepared for the flood that's coming up, so we actually was a week ahead, and I'm glad we did it a week ahead, because now, you know, all the campers is in there, so we don't have to work around them.
What would happen if there was a flood and the campers had to be up there in the park, in the, I mean, I'm just saying, what would happen? If the circus came to town and, or the fair came to town and there's no place for the campers to go? They just have to go somewhere else, okay? But the fair gets priority.
Have them go already.
The fair gets priority, is what I'm saying. They have priority over the time that they're supposed to-
Well, yeah, they can't tear down.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Steve, just real quick, too, and this would be a question from the mayor as well, have we ever put any thought into putting maybe asphalt or something that's recently caused in that gravel, because obviously we've got some young folks coming up there doing donuts and whatever's going on?
Well, graded the very next day, then up there spinning out. And I think we did have some kind of a plan to do a little bit every year.
Okay.
But we, we're kind of waiting.
Sure.
Because we're getting ready to redo those, the ball field lights, so we're gonna be digging more.
Makes sense.
Okay.
So, the asphalt we did have there, we dug it up once, we're probably gonna dig it up again, so we'll just wait till we get everything in, and then we can concentrate.
Would it be effective? I don't know if you could or not because of the activities going up there, putting a swing gate on that part of the parking lot to keep people from driving in there? I mean, is it worth it? Or is it easier just to-
Probably not.
Okay.
They can come in the back way, too, if they wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Or around the other side, there's many ways in there. And we also discontinued all the utilities at the Star Motel and the Conne Lodge for demo, and they've been demoing those. Star's just about down. The Conne Lodge, they're working on it. I think they've kind of been held back because of the backup of the transfer station, but- And they've been demoing those Stars just about down. The Conne Lodge, they're working on it. I think they've kind of been held back because of the backup of the transfer station.
Yeah, the timber broke at the park though.
Yeah.
I think Star is gone.
And we had a, a water leak on a platner. It was an old copper service line that actually had a hole in it. They, they actually had a pretty bad leak on their side right at their front door. After that was fixed, then it started leaking on our side. So, I think we had a pinhole and it just made it worse. So, we actually had to replace that line from the main that's out in the street all the way to the meter. So, we, we had to dig a pretty, pretty big chunk of road there. Um, the AC evaporator pump that's in the server room, it actually stopped working the other day. Don come in to water in the floor. So, we come over, clean that up. I have fans on, everything. It's pretty much dried out. I did get the pump back working again. So, I'll probably pull the fans out tomorrow.
Love it, my office.
Yeah, I got a little vamp in the office there. Fan's still running in there, but I checked it, it's dry. Uh, the sewer camera will need to be sent in for servicing. It is getting high humidity in the head, the camera head. So, we, we have to take that in because they fill it full of nitrogen and then fill all the seals. The last time we sent it in, it was right around two thousand or last second. So, um, but we, um, they did find a large leak in one of the sewer veins today. So, we'll be digging that up and repairing it. Thank goodness, it's not in the road. It's out in a, way off the roadside. So, it's in a dirt line. So, we'll be checking that out. An April drive project is nearing completion. I think they're probably pouring the last of the concrete today. So, they'll be doing some backfilling and, and dress up over there.
Yeah, if we can check for the mailboxes, the backside of the mailbox to the edge to make sure that there's thirty-six inches for a wheelchair to go down through there.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna be a problem.
Yeah, I know, but we need to, and if we have to, we can afford another little piece. Because there's a guy that has a wheelchair like mine and wants to come up that way.
Okay, we'll double check.
Okay.
I have one question, Steve. From the new sidewalk for about four feet in my yard and everybody else's yard, they dug it up. Are they gonna replace that or are we gonna have to do that?
No, they'll, they'll be starting to do dress up on that as, as long as it don't come a big flood.
Make my wife peaceful, let's just-
I think we're actually gonna-
I need an answer.
I offered to actually go out because they don't have a yard machine to go on their skid steer. So, we're gonna take ours over there and try to, once they get it pulled back into place, try to get as much rock up as, as we can. I was hoping to have a hydro seater in place so we can actually hydro seat all that. But we're still looking at another month before that comes in. So, they'll seat and straw it, and then it won't take hold. So, we'll probably be back over there to hydro seat anyway.
How's the sound?
Uh, the radio company's been here since last week installing radios in patrol cars. They ran the wire today for the dispatch consoles that are gonna go in. Next week on the tenth of June-
Can you speak up a little bit?
Next week on the tenth of June, there's supposed to be, the camera people are supposed to be here to start putting cameras in the RV park and the treatment plant.
Okay.
That's about all I got.
Thank you. Ricky's not here. Charles?
A quick update on the pool. What I'm painting out is pictures of where the leak is at our pool and also attached is a quote from the Leak Investigators of Nebraska. So, that first picture is where the leak actually is.
Is it like the red lines?
Yep, that's where the, that's where the break is. It's like a four-foot, you know, section there. Uh, the second page is just the plans showing on our plans where, where the leak is located. There's two quotes in that packet. The first one is from Leak Investigators. That's that company that came out and found the initial leak. It's them, the total is nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That's them coming out and doing the demo and doing the repair and doing the finished work. The second quote is also from them. That's a total of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's us doing the demo work and then, then coming to repair that line. I had another, just an informal quote from Capri Pool out of Saint Louis. And they estimated their cost would be twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand to fix our pool. So, Leak Investigators is quite a bit cheaper. And they're, they're the only company that talks to me on a regular basis and has, they've actually came out to the pool, you know, and looked at it. So, I, I recommend letting them do that work and letting them do the demo.
When, when did you get this quote?
Uh, that was sometime yesterday.
Okay, because if it would've got here by five, we could've had it approved tonight. But you need to tell them to come fix it. At ten thousand.
I was, I was waiting for-
Why don't we do, we can consider this as an emergency. Why don't we just do-
Well, it's under ten thousand dollars types. It's under ten thousand dollars and it's maintenance. We just-
Okay.
I'd want to do an emergency, I'd do one of them.
But yeah, turn in your invoices, say that I need it. As I come in, go.
I was waiting for that other quote from that other company.
Just call them up, tell them to get it out of here as soon as possible.
Okay, uh, they said the soonest they could come out was for the repairs, June nineteenth.
Okay, tell them to do it.
Sure.
Okay, let's get it done.
Get it done?
We're talking, when you say get it done, you're talking about the, have them tear it up and everything? The nine thousand, yeah, that's the best way to do it.
Pulling our people in.
Just something to help us.
Yes.
Real quick question.
Quick answer.
Is there a protocol on when the, the pool people are authorized to fill the pool? Here's one I ask.
It's two weeks prior. It takes two weeks to settle the chlorine.
Okay, so they couldn't do it maybe in April instead of waiting till two weeks prior to the pool?
But it depends on when the cold weather is.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they have to be looking at that is all. Yeah, it doesn't have to be two weeks prior to Memorial Day to get it, to this predicament, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but Charles is new this year, and we're gonna take care of Charles. Okay, go ahead.
All right.
You have sports.
We just ended flag football and cheerleading signups last week. And we have our coaches meeting tomorrow. We have a hundred and forty-six participants in twelve teams. And that's up from six teams last year and only fifty-three participants. So, we're pretty excited about that. And we had E-triple-C class out of Fort Leonardwood volunteer. So, not only do we have all coaches, we have all assistant coaches too for every single team.
That's awesome. Good job.
Pretty excited about that. We started soccer signups yesterday, which we all know soccer is our biggest sport. And they're already rolling in. So, that's pretty exciting as well. And Mr. Charles is gonna be one of our U-six coaches. That whole section's already filled out, so we're excited about U-sixes. Um, and then a few weeks ago, we got to take some of our baseball players to the Springfield Cardinals game at Military Appreciation Night. And they got to go on the field, be on the field with some of the players and be there during the National Anthem, all that. Along, along with some of the Fort Leonardwood Military people. So, that was pretty fun.
Good job.
That's what we gotta know.
Yep. Okay, Mark? Uh, just a couple of things. Neon Park sponsorships, I found your spot up there for the council. If you'd like to get a brick on Route sixty-six, that's one of our sponsorship program that was started by the Tourism Bureau a number of years ago whenever they started this project. Now that the dirt is starting to be moved, we are getting more and more orders for that. So, if you know anybody that would like to do that, there's a link on our website. They'll take them to that application that you see before you tonight. That just gives us like a welcome wall. It'll have the sponsored bricks located on that. Uh, the RV park update. Year-to-date, so far, we've raised or taken in seventy-two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
What's that?
Seventy-two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents. That's year-to-date. It was actually three thousand more than that. That's what we got in from October to January. So, the last four weeks, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. In the last seven days, eighteen thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. A lot of our campers are monthly rentals now, which guarantees that money coming in. We did reach a hundred percent occupancy on Saturday and Sunday. That's the first time we've did that since our park's been open. Tonight, we're at ninety percent. We have two available spots, but one of those is taken tomorrow. So, we're back at the ninety-five. So, the RV park is going pretty well at this point. Joe, question?
Is slot nineteen gonna be open for Thursday?
No, no, I have to look at my side, but I can take, like, take care of that in just a minute, okay? Um, if I could just comment on the emergency evacuation just real quick. We are working on getting that resolved. Uh, we have talked to the, the reservation site that we currently use for hours, and they're going to do that for that as well. Um, if we get a phone call or anything from Waynesville, we will be able to notify those campers. This is the address you go to. Here's the website you go to to register. You can pay online. We're trying to work that out so it's nice, seamless, streamlined, that type of thing to get away from us knocking on the doors. After they were evacuated at two AM, we're knocking on the doors at nine o'clock. Just making sure, because we never know when they're gonna leave. We don't know who they are, what their license is, what their phone number is. We know nothing of that. Um, all we know is they show up. So, we're trying to streamline that, make it easier for us, easier for the campers, easier for Waynesville at the same time. So, that's kind of some things that Charles and I have been working on since Saturday till now. So, go ahead. Any questions for me? That's all I have.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just think they all ought to be evacuated at one, I mean, at the same time. And then we just take them back to their areas at the same time also. Is that possible?
No, because I will, I'm from experience. I've talked to a guy that was there. There's people that actually have people tow their RV there and leave it there. So, they don't have a vehicle. This one particular lady was begging my friend to, to, to help her move her RV because she paid someone to move it there. And so, he went and dropped his off and then came back and helped her. So, it, it's probably not within the right same time, but very close to similar.
And also, some of the RV campers in Waynesville, they would come up to ours and whenever they found out there was a twenty-dollar fee, some, a couple of them left. So, it's totally up to them whether they come up there or not. My thought is, if they're being evacuated by Waynesville, if we come up with a form that says, "Here's the address to our emergency evacuation site for RVs. Here is the website you can go to to register and pay twenty dollars a night." Hand it to them and give them the option right there. That way, everything's out in the open. We don't have to knock on doors. And then we can go to our site first thing in the morning, see that we have eight of them, confirm we have eight of them. We know everybody's taken care of. If there's a different number, then we'd see which side is the one that is missing on the reservation or who we need to talk to, and we knock on one door instead of eleven doors. So, that's kind of what we're trying to avoid. This one?
I've never stayed in a RV park before, but is the electric always on? Or does somebody have to turn it on when actually somebody pulls into that spot?
Normally, the RV electric sites, as well as the water and the sewer are locked. But we had them unlocked for the fair. So, it just happened that they arrived and they were already unlocked.
Oh, okay. Cause I was gonna say, that would kind of-
Yes. But Steve, but that, that goes back to communication.
You'd get your information then when you had to unlock the electric.
Correct. That, that goes back to communication, and we're trying to resolve that as well. Joe, question?
Yes. First of all, thanks for showing me that program that you have set up for the RV park. I think that's very, it works great. Have you considered using maybe the similar program for this emergency evacuation process? Or is that illegal or?
That is, that's, we've already talked to them. They're going to set up. It's going to be kind of like a ghost site. So, it's not gonna be advertised. It's not gonna be something that anybody can just go to and reserve. It will be one that we share the link in an emergency situation only. You know what I'm saying? So, it's not an advertisement. We would have to share the link either on a piece of paper or, "Hey, I'm moving up there. Do you have anything for me?" "Yeah, let me send you a site." And then we send them the link to that site and they fill in everything, just like we do now. But it would be the emergency evacuation site. And then our normal RV site would be an advertised site for us. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And, but going back down to the Waynesville area, is there a possibility that they can have some kind of scan? Like a barcode they could scan to make it easier for them and us? Or is that something that you've thought about or?
I, I kind of shy away from putting that on a sign either. Because then they can reserve that spot. Next thing you know, we've got somebody at the baseball field. We didn't even, it's not even an emergency. But I think if it's something that, like for instance, the way I kind of understood it to happen this time from the campers, was they gotta knock on the door at two AM. They were told that they need to evacuate as soon as possible. At that point, if they're handed a piece of paper that had our emergency evacuation area on there along with the ghost site on how to register, pay, that type of thing, then it's all right there. You know what I'm saying? It's not advertised on a sign that anybody can just go and say, "Well, you know, hey, this place always floods. I'm gonna go here." Or if RV, RV park is full, they go to baseball field. We don't want that. You know, it's only for emergency evacuations, those types of things.
And by the way, thanks for the volunteers on Saturday. They did a really good job up there in the park and in that baseball field cleaning up all those weeds. Thank you. Whoever set that up, thank you. I'm sorry, Charles, I didn't know if that was you. Thank you.
Any other questions for you? Okay, Tyus, thank you.
Um, we had filed a bond on Alpine House. And we should start probably tomorrow on the process with the receiver of getting that property where we can't tear it down and sell it. I'll get with Mr. Dunbar in the next day or two. And he can get started. We've got the bond posted, twenty-five thousand dollars for the receivership. And then I picked out a secondary spot. Other people may wanna do it. If this works for this statute, if nobody's done this before. If it works, I would like to take the run at the, you know, Cozy R's Theater up there and next door there because that, that's where everybody turns to go to the north side. It's pretty unpleasant looking. So, if this works and we are able to get out of this without spending any city money, I, I think we'll try to do the next one. It's gonna be the Alpine House. Steve, there's one problem. I went behind the Alpine House. There seems to be a dump back there. Can you look at that to see what it would take for us to, you know, what's in that dump and make sure what we have?
So leftovers.
I don't wanna deal with that if we-
When they knocked down the back, they made a big pile back there.
Yeah, but there, there's a dump back there that I, I don't wanna start the process until we figure out what we got in that dump. I don't wanna buy, you know, I don't wanna be running around looking at some kind of environmental issue. So, if you would take a look at it, I'd appreciate it. I don't know if you've got, you just, there's so many problems you can get with environmental and those kind of things. I'd just like to make sure before we start.
Okay. Anything else? Anita?
Um, I just, well, John Moore's birthday is on the eleventh, so have you not been early, John?
That's early.
If, y'all look behind me. This is Allison Skinner. She is with the Pulaski County Weekly, and she's been doing write-ups on the city. Uh, she gave me the one on the Neon Park that she just did, so it's really nice. She gave it to me. I don't know. It's free.
There's some at the post office.
Oh, so you just go post office, give them?
Well, or like Price Cutter has them, and they're free. Yeah, but there's some right across the hall.
Thank you.
Um, this afternoon, Jim Clag called me with SEMA. They're gonna do the walkthrough inspection on the wastewater treatment plant. He'll be up here at one fifteen tomorrow. Archer Elgin's gonna be up here. I notified Steve so he could let Larry Hill and me and Mark are gonna go with him. So, uh, he said it'd probably take a couple of hours to do that. After they do the walkthrough, he'll go back and start the closeout paperwork. And, uh, we're gonna go ahead and do the submission. We are missing five canceled checks to submit our P4s and P6s for closeout. So, as soon as we get those, we can get that done. Tourism hired a professional photographer out of Springfield. That'll be taking pictures throughout our community. Uh, the Freedom Rock they're doing Thursday. I got ahold of Steve. They're gonna make sure it's trimmed and Spiffy looking for pictures. So, we're excited about that. We were notified a little bit ago that our Missouri disaster application for reimbursement for the storm damage was approved. And we'd be getting an award for the full amount. So, we'll go online and we'll do that. So, uh, we're excited that we're gonna get our money back on that.
Where does that money go? It goes to like individuals?
It goes to, no, this was to reimburse us for our employees' time. That was on our side. Uh, Marshall Drive, we're still working on the sidewalks. Clarence certifications, temporary easements. I'm missing one. One of the bankers has. I'll, I'll get that pretty quick, I hope. Uh, the CBVG closeout on the wastewater treatment plant will be at MRPC on the sixth. Um, we're getting all the paperwork ready for that closeout. We spent the CBVG money first, and after we spent all of that money, then we went into the FEMA money. So, hopefully, we'll get that closed out quickly. Alice Acres Army was here getting ready to bid our insurance with them. Uh, we've had a couple of airport term, uh, airport meetings on Terminal Building. COUSA was here. Meeting was today and discussed some projects. MRPC received the grant, grant for the military installation resilience review. That's like Night Sky and what kind of incumbents that Fort Leonardwood has, which we have no land problems. But it does that, and part of that is a housing study. They have got the application ready and sent out, I think she said forty-one contract, uh, contacts to get people to bid on our project. So, uh, she hopes to have a, a meeting sometime soon with all of us when they get the applications back for that. And let's see, um, what else is there? AUSA has a breakfast, um, on June the eleventh at seven-thirty. If anybody wants to go, let me know. It's for the, is it the Command Sergeant Major of the Army, retired Command Sergeant?
Yeah, so Dan Daley will be coming to do an event on post interview with breakfast with him.
And she told me they only had twenty, so if anybody would like to go, let me know. I know me and Mark are going. James, are you?
I would probably, is AUSA, God, yeah.
Yeah, so anybody wants to go to that? And then, please, did you hand these out? John Moore asked us to have a list and just convince us to make it easier so we don't found her. And that's about all I have there.
Okay, the next scheduled board of volunteers meeting will be June eighteenth at five o'clock. And the meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri Law Chapter six-ten dash oh-two-one. Will include Section one legal, Section two real estate, Section three personnel. And a motion to go to closed. Time next, motion, John Sager. Verification, discussion, follow.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
John?